Please rise for the invocation. I'm Mayor Glenn J. Robinson, Beatty County Church.
Thank you for the privilege of the opportunity to do this. Could you bow off me forward in prayer? Good God, thank you for the gift of this day. We recognize that each and every day of life is a gift that you share with us. I pray, Lord, that we've been good stewards of it. Thank you, God, for the privilege of being able to be in community together. We recognize, Lord, that we're so much better together than we ever could be apart. But at the same time, God, we recognize that community brings along with it challenges because we don't always agree. We don't always see things the same way. So, Lord, we pray for wisdom for this council as they act in the good for all of us. We pray and thank you, Lord, for their sacrificial leadership. We thank you, Lord, for police officers and firefighters who step in the harm's way for us over and over again. We ask you, God, to watch over us in all that we do. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we're pleased to have with us representatives of our lobbying firm in Washington. And we're going to have a presentation from Michael Willis of Marlowe Company with him, Brad Lael, and Ayesha Ratnasty. They live in Washington. It's nice that we get to be on the phone with you. Mike?
We're very glad to be with you this morning. It's always nice to get to the real world and now to DC. If we can do that, we'll do it. We want to come today. We haven't been here before the council in a while, but we wanted to give you an update on what's going on in Washington. As you've seen on the news, it's a chaotic place for the most part, but that's pretty much what's going on in the news. Behind the scenes, a lot of things are going on that have always gone on. The government's still functioning. Projects are still being funded and things are taking place as they need to. And so today, what we wanted to let you know is, as many of you know already, you have a delegation that came to DC recently, did very well in presenting the city's case for Congress, and did very well in really laying out the plans, the future, and the vision of the city. And on that, we're building with that to look at federal opportunities now that are with the federal agencies. A couple of years ago, Congress decided to take itself out of the funding game and turn a lot of things over to the administration. So now, your Marlowe and Company team work with 1,100 different agencies, sub-agencies, and departments on a daily basis to determine what funding opportunities they are providing to local governments such as yourself, and so that we can find things that match your needs and bring them to you. We have six people on our staff that are dedicated to working for city of Hickory and finding things that match what you have in mind and what you have to put your future. And tonight, I think I have, well, before I do that, I do want to say you guys are a great staff. We've been touring the city today, and I've got to see a lot of things that are going on here. It's a wonderful city, a lot of potential. And what we need here and what we're helping the team with you on are some economic development initiatives. And what we know is that economic development comes jobs, of course, and then also population. Those are very big, important things for the city. And so we're very thankful to be teamed with you, and we're very proud of the team that we have in Washington and the opportunity that we can work with.
My name is Sarah Hands and I'm with Michael at Marlowe Company. We're looking at a couple of specific things within the Economic Development Agency that may be good options in terms of grant programs to help the city bring in new industry and businesses. We're also working with EDA to hopefully bring in some officials from the agency to tour the city within the next two to six months. So we're working with them and Agri as well and sending that up. Those are the big issues we're hoping to accomplish for you right now.
And one of the things that will be coming very soon, as your congressional delegation, the different members will be visiting, looking for you to take a tour of the city and see the needs as well, so that they can participate with us in working with the federal agencies to make sure that all those tax dollars you're sending to Washington, that's not only making a factor for you. If there's any questions, we can answer them.
Gladly, thank you very much. Pleasure to be both. So I was very pleased to see the real working relationship these folks have with our representatives and senators and their staff. And it's like one of our representatives said, it's good to have boots on the ground right there in Washington while we are trying to govern Hickory with assistance from Washington. We're a long ways and outside our mind, it's good to have them there. Is this what it's supposed to do? Now that we've got, we're videotaping over here, I've been told I need to reset it. I'm very pleased to honor tonight some outstanding citizens of our community. The Carolina Moonlighters Barber Shop Harmony Group, if you all will come forward, please. Oh, you're going to stay over there? Oh, you're going to stay, they're going to stay over there. They're smarter than the rest of us. I'm going to read this proclamation, and then they're going to give us a few minutes, a couple of renderings of Barber Shop Harmony pieces that I think we'll all enjoy. Whereas the Barber Shop Harmony Society, also known as Society for the Preservation and Encouragement of Barber Shop Quartet Singing in America, was founded in April 11th, on April 11th, 1938. Whereas the Society celebrated the 75th anniversary, April 11th, 2013. Whereas the Hickory Chapter of the Barber Shop Harmony Society, known as the Carolina Moonlighters, was chartered February 18th, 1975. Whereas the Carolina Moonlighters Chorus and its quartets have entertained the audience in the Hickory area for 38 years by staging an annual show and by performing for conventions in nursing homes, churches, retirement homes, at the malls, at crawdack games, in restaurants, and numerous other locations in our community. Whereas the Hickory Chapter has represented the city in various competitions of the Dixie and Carolinas districts of the Barber Shop Harmony Society. Whereas the Hickory Chapter has promoted musical participation and excellence in young men by sponsoring young men to obtain vocal training at Society District and Chapter-sponsored harmony camps. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I proclaim May 19th through May 25th, 2013, as Barber Shop Harmony Week in the city of Hickory. Let's hear it.
Hi, I'm Bill Jones. I sing with the Moonlighters and also do publicity. I probably do publicity so they don't have to hear me sing as much. We want to thank Mayor Wright and the council for the proclamation. It helps us with our publicity. And now I see you as a handsome wall hanging. We, the Moonlighters have been present for about 38 years. We'd like to keep going for another 38 at least. To that end, we're always looking for new members. So if any of you are male and can sing "Happy Birthday" or like to sing in the shower, we encourage you to come to one of our rehearsals every Thursday at 7:00 PM in the Art Center. Also, this Saturday, we're putting on a show at the Art Center Auditorium, 7:00 PM. The admission is free, so price is right. I'd like to introduce our quartet for the evening. Don Lang is singing baritone. Bob Johns, our current president on bass. Ed Walk is singing lead, and Isaac Stewart is singing tenor. So they call themselves the Annex, but after you hear them, I think you'll call them Acapella Well-Crafted.
Oh beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of gray, for purple mountain majesties above the fruit that plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, on thee, and crown thy earth with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. My country is of thee, sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims' pride. From every mountainside, let freedom ring, let freedom ring. God bless America, land that I love, stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
The mayor asked for something patriotic, and he also asked for a show tune that might actually be sung on the show on Saturday night. Love. That's not that song. That was actually two songs.
What a day this has been, what a rare mood I'm in, why it's almost like being in love in love. There's a smile on my face for the whole human race, why it's almost like being in love in love. All the music of life seems to be like a bell that is ringing for me, and for me, and from the way that I feel when that bell starts to peal, I could swear I was falling, I could swear I was falling. It's almost like being in love in love. All the music of life seems to be like a bell that is ringing for me, and for me, and from the way that I feel when that bell starts to peal. I could swear I was falling, I could swear I was falling. It's almost like being in love in love. It's almost like being in love, in love.
Can we get you to do a solo now? The government business is ugly enough as it is. I think this may be a first. We have two people requesting to get to speak, and as usual, we ask that comments be held in three minutes. We ask that we be respectful of each other, no cheering, no jeering. And with that, I'll first call on Dr. Glenn Kinkney.
Good evening, Mayor and council and other members. I come before you representing an organization by the name of Christians Aligned for Actions and Principles. We are an organization that is non-political nor religious, but we are an organization about disseminating information. We've been hosting a couple of our workshops, and one at the Shufus Wyze Sparkling Building, and the other one last month over at the Penn Station. And our workshops and seminars are regarding information, particularly as it relates to the foundation of our country, the values of our country, and helping to preserve those values. Our information is educational. We provide books, DVDs, articles, that kind of information, and we have public speakers. Matter of fact, one of our speakers has been, most notably, Dr. C.L. Gray, who is a renowned author and speaker and a physician here in Hickory. And I said all of that to say this, if I may, I'd like to give each one of you one of these cards. We are in the process of making plans to bring Dr. Ben Carson to Hickory, North Carolina on August 22nd, along with Dr. Mark Harris and with Rare Admiral Chaplin, I should say, Barry Black. And I've got some more here, and I'll give some for you. But I wanted to make the city aware of this event. We'll be hosting this event at the Metro Community Center. I had a wonderful chat with the director there, B.B. Leach, and we were able to get that issue resolved. So this is an event that we're bringing, and as you can see, the theme of our event is the values of education. As most of you probably are aware, I also work over at CBCC, and I see firsthand how uneducated our high school graduates are when they come over to CBCC and having to get into remedial courses just to handle math and English. And so we know that there is a definite need. And so again, I wanted to make the city aware of this, certainly want to make you all aware of this, and certainly would like to ask for your prayers and your support. Thank you very much. I support that. Questions? Should I wait for questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Larry Pope?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Crum. I would ask City Council, City Attorney, and City Manager for reasonable accommodations under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, Section 504. I have presented a letter that I would like to ask the City Clerk, Debbie, to read to City Council so that it can be placed verbally into the record, and then she has the hard copy that can be kept and placed on file, if you would, Debbie, please.
Dear Mr. Berry, Under the North Carolina Public Records Law, General Statute 132-1, I am requesting an opportunity to inspect or obtain copies of the following public records from the custodian of these records. Updated conflict of interest statements. Since these are required to be filed yearly on July 1st, I expect these copies to be available in five business days. If there are any fees for searching or copying these records, please inform me if the cost will exceed $5. However, I would like to request a waiver of all fees in that the disclosure of the requested information is in the public interest and will contribute significantly to the public's understanding of the actual cost of the sales project. This information is not being sought for commercial purposes. The law requires that you respond to and fulfill this request as promptly as possible. If you expect a significant delay in responding to and fulfilling this request, please contact me with information about when I might inspect copies or the ability to inspect the requested records. If you deny any or all of this request, please cite each specific extension you feel justifies the refusal to release the information and notify me of the appeal procedures available to me under the law. Thank you for complying with this request. Sincerely, Larry Pope.
Thank you, Debbie. I would just like to say to council in closing that I requested this information before. I received information that I gave to the city, $41 for what was supposed to be the total packet of information. What I found at that point in time after going through the information was that it was not current. It dated back to 2008, and under the law, you must, as City Council members and others in the city, city staff, are supposed to give conflicts of interest statements yearly by July 1, the last day of June. That has not been done, and that's why I am back requesting that it be updated and brought up today. Thank you so much.
I'd like to clarify, if I may, that, Mr. Pope, you can go ahead and be seated. I'd like to clarify that each council member, to my knowledge, has submitted an update. In many cases, it has been a verbal update that says no change. In other cases, we submitted updates that included changes marked through and the year of change dated. So I would disagree that no updates have been submitted during that time.
And I might add, if we're going to leave this in five days, mine will change as of July 1st this year, so if he's going to get it to the five days, it's going to be for last year.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Say it. Motion by Mrs. Fox, Second Amendment Prosecutor. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. It's unanimous. All members are prepared. Motion to reaffirm or reiterate, a matter of final second reading?
Second.
Say it. Motion by Mrs. Patton, Second Amendment Prosecutor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is cleared. Items to be removed from the consent agenda. Your motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fox, Second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is cleared.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item of business this evening is City Manager's Fiscal Year 2013/14 Recommended Budget. And prior to opening a public hearing, I'll go through a presentation that outlines my recommended budget. You all recall, two weeks ago, Mr. Wood and myself did an extensive presentation of the budget to you all, and of course, it was released to the public, both at the libraries, clerk's office, as well as on the city's website. And I won't spend as much time with it as we did two weeks ago, but I will go through a summary of our budget. It is, as required by statute, balanced at $90.3 million. That is divided between the city's various funds. The two largest funds being your general fund, which is the general operations of the city, lease buyer, et cetera, that most people think of as city services. The second fund, which is substance in terms of the dollars expended already, is your utility fund, which in Land's terms is the watered sewer system that the city of Hickory operates, not just for the city, but also for a number of, serve a number of neighboring municipalities and wholesale capacity in similar counties as well. The recommended budget is actually a $4.4 million reduction from the current year, which is 4.73%. That reduction does not reflect a decrease in services, but is necessitated from an accounting standpoint in the current fiscal year. City Council appropriated a significant amount of your fund balance to be put into the Capital Reserve account to fund the capital needs of the city for the next several years. That appropriation is not recommended in the current year, so you have a one-time expenditure for capital that reduces your overall budget by 4.70%. I am recommending that you maintain the property tax rate at $50, or excuse me, $0.50 per $100 of value. That would shock everybody. Actually, it's against, it's against the law. That's above your actual statutory limit of the tax rate. So here's the funds of the city. Again, I mentioned the general fund, $45 million, going down $1.3 million, that's that capital. 3.7%. Again, the watered sewer fund, which is about half the size of the general fund, that's actually increasing a little bit. We have requested, and as far as I know so far, our neighboring communities that we sew water to have agreed to the 3% rate increase, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Your sledge compost fund, that's kind of a sister fund of the watered sewer fund. Stormwater, relatively minor fund, but has to be accounted for separately. Your transportation fund, actually seeing a reduction, again, this is driven by capital. And then your salted waste fund, which I'll touch on in a minute, which is funded both by general tax dollars as well as the monthly bills that residents and businesses pay to have their trash collected. So again, overall, these funds, a $76.7 million budget for '13, '14. Then you've got your internal service funds, and this is where you're really just moving money within the city. If you talk about the real expenditures, it's $76.7 million. These are accounting requirements where you take your capital reserve, your fleet maintenance, and your insurance fund, and you have to, in effect, the general fund and the utility funds pay these funds to provide those services, if you will, to the departments. So again, overall, you can see the big, the big change is there in that capital reserve that I mentioned at the beginning. So overall, down 4.73% in the $90 budget. Just kind of touch on quickly the revenue highlights. We went through in a lot of detail the uncertainty of tax reform, and Mr. Wood documented to you all the different revenues that are potentially on the chopping block in the general assembly, and they add up to $3.8 million, so a potential revenue loss. We're optimistic, well, maybe optimistic's too optimistic of a term. We hope that the language we're hearing out of Raleigh about holding the city's harmless will come to fruition as the state's wrestling, I believe, between three different options. Tax reform. Property tax base increased just slightly, 3.8%. That's actually a positive, and for two years, we've lost the property tax base. Property tax revenue, though, overall, is slightly below where we were in '07, '08. That's kind of our peak year to be benchmarked against before we went into the recession. And just as an FYI, one penny on the property tax rate generates $450,000. And just as an FYI, one penny on the property tax rate generates $450,000. Uh... Checking 2% increase in sales tax. We're consistently conservative about how we project sales tax and actually don't project to collect more than we already collected in the previous year. Um... Harmless revenue is being discussed literally right now in Raleigh in both of the budget, the... The House and Senate budget, uh... Discussions. Not to go into extensive detail about what that is, but, uh... It's funds that we received from the state of North Carolina to hold us harmless for reductions that they made in the property tax base, uh... More than 10 years ago. And Hickory, because we are a big manufacturing center, uh... Has a large dollar amount in terms of $255,000. Us, we and Lenore, two of the bigger cities, uh... That rely on that revenue source. I am recommending that you increase your solid waste fee, uh... By a dollar a month from $14 to $15 per month. Showed on a previous slide that the solid waste fund is accounted for separately. That's, uh... Generally accepted accounting principles or governmentally accepted accounting principles. Want you to treat those activities as if they are a business. Uh... And of course, it's purely a policy decision as to whether or not you fund those with user fees. So what people are paying to have their trash collected versus, uh... Property tax. Uh... But your policy for the last several years has been to gradually move back to more and more of a self-sufficient fund, where the users actually pay for the cost of the service. Water and sewer rates, already mentioned, that increasing 3% and... And most of, uh... The other fees increasing 1.7%, which is consistent with CPI. Um... Kind of a big hit, uh... That we've been gradually absorbing in the budget. Uh... The SAFER grant, which we received five years ago to have a much-needed ladder company. Uh... 12 firefighters that were with that. A federal grant that we were able to secure has now rolled off. Rolled off gradually every year until it's past year 2013, '14. We absorb the full amount. And that's, uh... Half a million dollars, and that would be an ongoing expenditure. Um... Several years ago, when fuel prices spiked, uh... You took, uh... Very prudent action to set aside over a million dollars to, uh... To fund fuel spikes. We are relying on that to the tune of $150,000. We relied on it the last several years, and I believe we're about down to $300,000, uh... That's available in that account. Uh... Duke Energy is in the process. In fact, the mayor will be testifying on behalf of the leading municipalities in the city of Hickory. In their rate case, they are asking for an almost 10% increase, uh... In their rates. We like this city, obviously, and... And we pay Duke Power almost $800,000 a year to... To light the streets, and the 10% increase will equate to $80,000. Uh... I'm really proud of the fact that, uh... Mr. Wood and the departments have, uh... Done such a great job, really, during the whole course of the recession, of not letting our rolling stock and our temporary capital, as I like to call it, uh... Degraded. A lot of times what happens is a... A city will take a shortcut, and they'll say, "Well, we just won't buy as many police cars, or we won't buy as many, uh... Utility vehicles." We'll put that off. Well, that comes back and haunts you. At some point in time, you're gonna have to replace two or three times your normal annual replacement schedule. We've been very disciplined and give, again, Mr. Wood and the departments great credit for staying on top of that. So you... You have not kicked the can down the road there, and you're in good shape. Boards and commissions and external appropriations are recommended to stay at their existing level. From a staffing standpoint, I am recommending eliminating four vacant, full-time positions, uh... In the general fund and adding a position at the FBO, fixed base, uh... Fixed space operation at the airport. Uh... Also, kind of in that HR category, the state of North Carolina is requiring all the, uh... Local governments in the state to hand you up a one-time, uh... Contribution to the state's unemployment fund. And y'all know they borrowed money from the federal government. Now they have to pay it back, and they have tapped all of us, and pretty much, uh... $150,000. And, uh... We're planning to take that from contingency. So we... We budget a pretty healthy amount of contingency every year. It's gonna take $150,000 on your route to that, we know that.
Is that all... You remember New York body, not just the list? Like, uh... Got it?
Cities and counties. I'm not sure how the states handle it within their own agencies. But yeah, cities and counties.
And business is gonna bear a significant share of that, too.
Uh... So for our employees, uh... We're recommending a... A merit increase that will average between 1.5 and 2% based on their evaluation, their performance. And then, uh... The rest of the benefit package for our city employees is remaining the same. And we will continue to have a targeted hiring freeze. Uh... We've had that since the recession. It's... What it really is, is it's an opportunity as people leave and plan with the city for us to do a review. Uh... We have had some opportunities to consolidate positions, to move positions around. Uh... In some ways, the elimination of the four positions that I mentioned a minute ago is a result of the fact that, which we have turnover, we can take a constant look at it and see if there's better ways to provide services. More cost-effective. We will continue to do that. One of the things I'm really proud about in this budget, uh... You... You saw that, you know, we're not gonna see a lot of revenue growth next year is the fact that we're still able to enhance the city. Uh... And we've really been able to do that over the last couple of years through partnerships. And, uh... We're gonna continue that. Hickory Community Theater came to U-Haul last year, and we entered into a partnership with them to, uh... Help renovate the community theater, which is the old city hall, which, of course, you own. And, uh... So funds are appropriated to continue that partnership, as well as, uh... You were asked by the Hickory Women's Club, uh... To provide some renovations. A little bit of a strong word, but some updates to the Schuford House. And, uh... Continue that partnership with Salt Block as well, and the, uh... Science Center, um... All of the, uh... The art museum, all the great amenities there. We'll continue that partnership. And then two more we're gonna add to that, um... Are really significant steps forward. And you... You heard me mention this two weeks ago, and, uh... Uh... We're within, uh... Probably a month or so of the announcement as, uh... The family that we're working with is, uh... Been interviewing architects, and is refining their plan for the contribution they wanna make to the city. Uh... It's gonna be, uh... Exciting, and it's gonna dovetail in with, uh... Other initiatives that the city is working on. Great partnership. And then lighting the Henry Ford soccer complex, I wanna really, uh... Compliment Mr. Wood. He kind of brokered this, uh... Um... He... And, uh... Mr. McCloud really brokered this, uh... Great, uh... Partnership with CDYSA, the County Valley Soccer Association, who has an agreement with the city to use the Henry Ford complex. And, uh... In partnership with them, they're gonna fund, uh... A, uh... Significant percentage of the update, the upgrade to the lighting, or putting in the lighting out there. Uh... Not only is that gonna provide more opportunities for our own children, uh... Both in soccer and lacrosse and other field sports, but it's gonna also be a marquee venue, really, in all of western North Carolina, for travel teams, which CDYSA, our travel teams, to come to Hickory and... And have tournaments. And that has a... That has a nice impact on our local economy, uh... As they stay here overnight and, um... Eating local restaurants. I have a dau... I have daughters who play on the travel volleyball team, and... And I feel with my pocketbook every meeting they leave. Uh... So we're excited to have them coming here. Um... And then we've got a... An... Another good partnership with Hickory Baseball, uh... To upgrade LP France Stadium. And the budget considers, uh... About a million dollars in partnership with them, uh... To upgrade the stadium, which is, uh... Just over 20 years old. So that's, again, the highlights. Uh... Went through it in a lot more detail two weeks ago, but I'd be glad to, uh... Fill in any questions or comments that you all may have, of course, departmental staff, as well as Mr. Wood here, uh... To answer any questions.
I think I might have misheard you. Some of the, uh... Fourth number two of revenue to the base, the tax base is run by 3.8%.
3.38, thank you, Mr.... See, 3.8%.
That would be good to have.
Yes, 3.8% would be a very different budget.
Good old day.
Yeah.
Um... I... You... You contrasted, um... Previous year against the proposed budget, and the solid waste fund that's down. Yeah, we're increasing the fee by a dollar. What's capital?
Capital. Same thing.
Uh... Okay.
Capital we bought. Can you try to...
Yeah, I think you're... 43.
Three. So it's just the... The ups and downs of your capital expansion.
And then are we not giving rollouts? Is it this year?
No, that's... That... That is still a year away. I appreciate you raising that. Um... We partner with a private partner. Um... I keep wanting to call them GDS. They're now a public waste and have them for years, but, uh... Today, we actually partnered with them to collect the recyclables. Um... They are in the process of completely changing their materials recycling facility. The MRF is what they call it. Um... Yes, we will go from the bins that you have now, the blue bins, to actual rollouts. And they'll have a truck that goes by to pick them up and dumps them, and they'll be sorted at the MRF versus sorted at the curb. So that will... That'll also provide the opportunity to recycle more products, uh... In terms of what you can put in there, different types of plastic and cardboard, et cetera. Uh... Plus, it could just be more convenient if you're not needing to buy a small unit. Thank you very much. And that's...
What... What are the... I... I'm... I'm interested in that, um... As well. What... What... What are the steps to get there? I mean, are we gonna have to make some decisions as it relates to the frequency of collection? Um... In... In rate issues? And then, um... From a financial perspective, are we gonna see decreases perhaps in solid waste? Because, I mean, I'm... Decreases in solid waste as there's more materials being recycled?
Yeah, potentially. Um... We're... We're not at the point of getting into all of the nitty-gritty to figure that out yet, uh... But those certainly are decisions that, uh... Will need to be made about, of course, the cost of the rollout itself, the frequency of collection, uh... Even some conversation about who does the collecting. So yeah, there's a whole host of issues that wrap up in that issue. And that is not for this current year, for the next... Sorry, not for this fiscal year, for the next fiscal year. 2014, '15.
I'd like to make sure the folks who have not followed this process understand that, uh... That we have been engaged in this process of developing the budget now for, really, for three or four months. And, uh... So this is... This is the culmination of that. And, uh... It seems like it goes through council pretty fast, And it seems like it goes through council pretty fast, but let me assure you, it is not. It has not gone very fast, it's been like making sausage or whatever. And we've had a great time doing it. With that, we're going to have our public hearing. And I'd like to remind you that our format for that is we have 15 minutes allotted for those who want to speak against the proposal. And then 15 minutes for those who want to speak for the proposal. Then we have five minutes of rebuttal and five minutes of summary rebuttal. We have no control over how many people want to speak, so we ask that everyone be considerate of others and allot your time accordingly. Again, respectful please, no cheering, no jeering. And with that, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this budget. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this budget?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, from about 8th Street, North. First of all, I'd just like to very briefly commend you on what I think is a fairly fiscal and responsible budget. And I wanted to make a comment. I've been thinking about this a lot since the presentation two weeks ago. And I know in today's presentation, there's nothing about inspiring spaces and issues, of course, because we're not there yet. What I'd like to say is, as a citizen, I'm not representing any group here, but as a citizen who lives in the Umont-Falling Creek area, that as I look at the proposals of moving forward and fixing and moving the city forward in terms of its future and the considerations for rights, some of those inspiring spaces projects I think are great. Some I'm not so sure about, others are questionable, of course, and what you do. But they're part of the decision-making process that all of you have to go through. But I want to stand here tonight, and I'm not sure this is going to be very popular with anybody in Hickory but me, but to tell you that you mentioned, Mr. Berry, two weeks ago, that the average increase in property tax to do a number of those projects was somewhere in the neighborhood of a little over a hundred dollars in a year. And that's how I'm remembering that, if I'm being correct. And I just want to say as council, as a personal citizen, that I'd be more than willing to pay that hundred dollars or more a year to see some of these projects, because I believe that some of these projects will indeed create a better city, a more welcoming city, a city that will bring, and by that I mean business and entrepreneurship and a number of things, and lifestyle in this city, having been a part of that process. But lastly, I'd like to also ask you, please, to, as you consider those things, please remember those middle and lower-income property owners, who that would be a big burden on them in some ways. And if there's any ways that we can work that in a way, and I'm not sure of the answer to that, alleviating how that works, but as we move forward, it would be a great thing to me. Thank you very much for your time.
I would just like to say that I think all of us of your share that concern about the burden, particularly on lower and middle-income people. To my knowledge, there's no way to deal with that in the property tax arena. But that's, at least in my case, my opinion was the 1% prepared food tax would be an alternative that would hit hardest with the people with the more disposable income, would not be burdensome even to them. And so I kind of like the 1% prepared food tax, but we just may not ever get that. But we, I would tell you, well, I'll talk about that in the general comments later. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the budget? With that, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
May your approval of the budget?
I'll say it.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Fox. Any discussion?
Yes, I have some questions. I'm doing this a lot of all, and I am truly sexy to middle-class and lower-income budgets. I have also been on this council for nineteen years. And I'm going to give an example, and so have you heard this example. When I chaired the First Apairance Commission, I sat in a seminar, an all-day seminar, and I heard the Public Works Director of Greenville, South Carolina, lay out the plan for downtown Greenville. And folks, I've been talking for twenty-five years while Greenville's been doing it. And we visited Greenville. I didn't visit Durham, but through my reading and through my understanding, Durham has renovated itself, and it took fifteen to twenty years. Chattanooga did the same thing. Fifteen years ago, I wrote a paper for my friend Ben Locke, and I quoted Chattanooga, invest in a community that invests in itself. Right now, in Hickory, there is a general, what I call malaise or attitude that we are, we're just sort of here. And I realize that we have had a brutal recession. But folks, we've been a vibrant place to live, and we need to get back on track. We have a stellar group in inspiring spaces. They do have travel. And many of the people on inspiring spaces have been active participants in our land use processes. And when I look at the 2018 objectives that consultancy suggested, all those are in our land use processes, which we approve. We have paid consultants to come in and talk about entrance ways, more tree cover, connectivity, bringways, vibrant business areas. They have given us, over and over again, a roadmap. And you know what? I'm tired of talking, and I have thought about this and thought about this. We're middle-class, and I don't like tax increases. And I am a physical conservative, but I am opposed to this budget for that reason. We need fifty-three cents. It's my understanding more than can just raise their taxes. All these places we have visited use combinations of property taxes, public-private partnerships, business improvement districts, which I have never seen to get anywhere with business improvement districts here. We met after our meeting in Raleigh with Susan Plutz, the former mayor of Salisbury. They started raising their taxes five or six years ago, a little at a time. They have a Salisbury tourism tax. They have business improvement districts. And yet, we just keep having conversations. So I applaud the staff. I applaud you all for doing a hard job in a trying economy. But the time is right for this community to move forward, and that's why we were elected leaders. And I'm going to part company, I suppose, with most of my council members, because I believe that we need to invest in our sales. Because we can't expect Raleigh or Washington to write us a check.
I will agree with you that we need to move forward, but until we have that roadmap from our inspiring spaces, I don't think it's proven for us to decide what amount we should increase. But I do agree that there will be an increase to fund what we want to see as a vision for the future of the city, to help grow Hickory. And it will come, but it will be a plan rather than a shotgun approach. And I think that we all, through our travels, have agreed that this is what it's going to take and we have tasked the inspiring spaces to work with it, consultants to work with it, and that we will get a roadmap of what is the best use of the dollars and then get a dollar amount of what it's going to cost and then move forward. And I think we are all, as a council, on board with moving forward with inspiring spaces and to regrow our community.
Well, I would suggest that two cents of that go to inspiring spaces and use that two cents to put that in a fund, because it will be just several months probably till they pick their priorities. And if you go back to our land use plans, we already have people who have told us what to do. This is the same old song and dance, because we have been through charades. We have listened historically in the last two land use processes to people in town who showed up. And I think inspiring spaces knows what they need to do. And I think that there is no problem with giving two cents of this budget money and the other one cent for roads. We are on a sixty-year-old cycle with paving our roads, and this would get us, one penny of that would get us below the forty-five-year cycle. And when you drive into Hickory, folks, it's all about presentation.
I think everything that Ms. Fox said is part of the plan, and I understand and to some degree agree with what she's saying about the length of time it's taken us to get there and we're not there yet. But I also see the other side of it is that you have to be able to pay for what it is that you're willing to do. And I think that that is the issue, and that's where we're at right now. I think that it's inevitable that in the very near future that we're probably going to see a tax increase to be able to fund these types of things. But I agree with Ms. Patton that right now, we don't have that plan in place to be able to know exactly what it's going to cost and even though we're that, be able to communicate that this is the plan and this is why we're asking for an increase in taxes. I think that's the brief that we don't have yet. We're almost there, but we're not quite there yet. And I think that we need to take the necessary time. I think that I'm the newest member on the council, and the one thing that I've learned from each and every one of these areas is that you don't want to do things too hastily. And although I agree with Ms. Fox that this has been going on for quite some time, there's been a lot of talking, there's been a lot of discussion, I think we're on the verge of being right there. And I think it's inevitable, and I think that it's going to happen real quick.
In respect to you, Mr. Gens, I would never say that we've done anything in advance.
I can think of one incident, but I won't do that.
We can all think of one or more. I mentioned the desire for the 1% food tax. And I think I played this comment last week. We think this is going to be a combination of investment by us locally, investment of state funds, investment of federal funds, and investment of private funds. Did I say that? Did I use the sixty million or so? What number did I use? I think we have, but the problem is, we don't know the number. And I don't want to go out, I suspect that some of us on this council are going to be asked to lead the charge. Let's just try to make this happen. It needs to happen. We've all agreed, it needs to happen. I don't want to start off apologizing for a tax increase that we put on people without an explanation of where it's going to go and why we need to do it right now until we say, here's the total plan, and here's what it's going to cost, and here's how we're going to fund it. So I agree with Mrs. Fox's desire to see this happen. And I think, I don't know that anybody on this council is any more committed than anyone else. I think all of us are committed. But we, as Mr. Gens said, we're close. Let's get there, let's don't start out apologizing, let's get the buy-in. And I think I said last week, I said, folks, y'all help us. You all are here, you know what we're talking about, you know how thrifty we've been over the years? Help us get the buy-in for this, for the benefit of all of us, even the benefit of the nation. So I'm satisfied with the fact that people, if they've been listening, they know that we're going to ask for investments of the local people. And we're going to ask, as we did today, Mrs. Fox and I, in no uncertain terms, we're asking for investments by the state government. And as Mr. Lael and Mrs. Sarat and I asked in Washington, we're asking for investments from them. We didn't get in this long, we got to get out of it. But I don't want us to have to feel like we've got to get out of it alone. So I'm satisfied with the direction, and I applaud the staff for bringing us a budget with no interest.
I agree with what's been said. And one story that the mayor told me about one of the leading citizens of Hickory, generation-wise, he asked at the post office if they heard about inspiring spaces. And she said, I hadn't heard about it. So I think without a plan, without a blueprint in place with priorities, that I think it's coming, but I just don't think at this time the time is right to really ask for a two- or three-cent increase to put somewhere where we really don't have a specific where it needs to go. It would be a hard sell for the citizens of Hickory.
And just sort of to piggyback on that, I think that we need, as a council, to have a discussion about how we're going to do it, because I would advocate that we put it to the vote, that we ask them for a bond. I think we can get better rates and financing better that way. We involve the community. There is buy-in with a successful bond issue. And so to be, to not give the voters an opportunity to sound off on it, and look, I'll help you lead the charge, Mr. Mayor, and Mrs. Fox, and everybody else, to try to get this done. But I think that that's a discussion you have to be had. Is this appropriate for issuance of bonds?
Well, I just want to go back. I'm going to be a little more modest tonight, because I'm living here and I have too much knowledge. All of our land use plans that we take forward have talked about tree-lined streets. They've talked about medians. They've talked about connectivity. They've talked about green line. And we keep talking about a plan. Folks, we have plans sitting on the shelves that we have never funded. And if we had funded some of those, we might not even be sitting here having this discussion.
Yeah, I have two leading citizens. If I mention the names, everyone here would know these names, who have said the thrust of this does not need to be tree-lined streets and entrance ways and all of that. And I had disagreed. I said, no, it's all tied together. We need to make this a place that everyone brags on and lives here. They tell other people how wonderful the place they live in is. They're proud of it and not see us as an aging infrastructure here. But we've got to put together a plan, if we're going to sell this, that includes demolition of old buildings and includes preparation of sites and buildings for people who want to bring in jobs, because I am told by these leading citizens, either that they've never heard of this, okay? Or this thrust has to be shovel-ready, job opportunities.
Well, maybe they haven't heard of inspiring spaces, but I was an active participant in all of the land use processes. And we kept standing room only with citizens who talked about greenways and connectivity and more sidewalks and walkability. Folks, we've got plans. We are just not willing to spend the money. Or we wouldn't be having this discussion. And letting keep tree-lined streets, improved entrance ways, more sidewalks, walkability, they are economic engines. That is what makes companies want to come to Hickory.
Well, I would disagree. I think we are ready to spend the money. It's just we want to spend it with a plan rather than just say, we're going to set aside dollars. We would like to see inspiring spaces put together what their priorities are. We buy in, and we get public buy-in for it, and we're all ready to spend the money.
Public buy-in is critical. If we start off in this and we're backing up because of the tax increase that people were not expecting, they had no warning of, then we're going to be, we're going to spend a whole lot of time explaining and not much time charging for it.
Well, I think that one of the economic leaning groups said that electing folks or have to be willing to take a chance. So I'm going to take a chance.
I feel like all of us are taking a chance. This is a third tax-averse community. We've all laid ourselves bare out there that we are pushing to ask for investments. This is not a community that's looking forward to paying more taxes. So I guess I would say, I think we are taking a chance. Have we taken the vote? We're not taking the vote out there. Any further discussion?
I just want to reiterate that every penny on the property tax would add ten dollars a year if you had a hundred thousand-dollar property. Everybody knows exactly what that means. And some people have trouble figuring that up. Sometimes it gives me about ten dollars for every penny on that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Mrs. Fox voted no, there were six ayes. Any appointments?
I would like to nominate Catherine Silvino to be Community Relations Council.
If it says they're eligible, does that mean that they have asked to be reappointed or would like to be reappointed? Well, then I would suggest that we include in that nomination the three members of the Business Development Committee, who together with inspiring spaces and the strategic planning have helped us get to where we are today. And they've done a great job.
Good question about eligibility.
Because if they're eligible, it means they're also willing to serve.
Oh, they have been contacted? Oh, okay.
Now, there is, unless they know if they can serve another term, then they can firm one or another one to serve.
I would like to re-nominate Barbara Clemmons for Planning Commission. And Rachel Riddle for Public Art. And Charlie Gates for Recycling.
I would like to re-nominate Candace Brown for the Community Apairance Commission. And Juanita Truor for the Library Advisory Board.
I would nominate another term, Beryl Rogers for Community Relations Council. And David Moser for the Community Apairance Commission.
I'd like to nominate, reappoint Billie Prayer for Planning Commission, Charles Jeffers for the Library Advisory Board. I'd also like to let the council know that I have resigned as the Council appointee to the Salt Block Foundation, and I would like to offer the nomination in this as a senior figure appointee.
Okay, I'll nominate Mark Huggins for At-Large Citizens Advisor Committee. And Olamay Williams for Small Cities Planning Area. Jan Painter to be at the Apairance Commission. Sarah Huffman, Nancy Larry Triplet, and Steve Walker to the Historic Leadership Commission. Dr. Michael Emberly for the Public Housing Authority. Vernon Charlton to PDA. Now, this is the PDA and the convention center, right?
Just the TDA.
Just the TDA.
Which governs the CDB, nominated by the council.
Unless another council member has a burning desire, I would nominate myself for the other position. If God is not eligible. And I guess we're waiting on you.
I need to nominate Amy Rush for the Community Apairance.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to be international counsel?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I circled that one. I'd like to nominate Carl Wolf for the International Counsel. Have we overlooked any that are eligible tonight? Do we have a motion?
I think I do, Joey Skidder, Parsons, right?
Well, once I circled, I didn't see none of it. I did say Vernon Charlton, didn't I?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the nominations?
An approval of nominations for board conditions.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is carried. That motion is adjourned. Any matter not on the agenda? General comments?
I have two. I'm going to ask you about Chair of the Chase. I have two. The eight annual Chair of the Chase was held this past Saturday. I have to give a lot of credit to Mandy. Mandy, you know, Mandy's here tonight. Mandy, obviously, she always helps with that, and she was there again and taking charge and leading that, so I appreciate Mandy, of course, doing that. But we actually had a first-time half-marathon person that finished the race, Sarah Principal, who was the city manager's right-hand person up there on the board board, ran her first half-marathon, and I thought that was really good. We also had a sixty-eight-year-old woman that finished the half-marathon in less than three hours. So that, they had about, I think about five hundred participants in the, I heard a lot of good, positive comments about Hickory, and people appreciated it. The other thing is, I had the pleasure of filling in for the mayor that was in Riddick County at the Golden Smiles, which is a pediatric ministry here in Hickory on Tate Boulevard. And I met Dr. Ross Pennlin and his wife, Holly. They have three children. They're both graduates of the More Ryan College, and much like Mr. Boege had done, they were bragging on Hickory. They were saying that there was no doubt in their mind, after they graduated from college at the More Ryan, spent time at the More Ryan College, they decided that Hickory was the place for them. And not only were they going to raise their family here, but they're going to start their business here, and they're excited, and they've got a brand-new facility right over on the Tate Boulevard, so that was encouraging to hear that also.
And I would just like to invite everyone Saturday to the tenth birthday party for the fall. We're going to have lots of festivities, lots of raffles, and Breakville Planning is going with this celebration.
And they have extended to also Mondays, and there'll be entertainment on the sales floor, rotary vinyl, contestants will be there each week for the next six weeks.
Mondays and June.
Mondays and June.
One thing about Hickory people, if you open up a stage, they'll come, right? Well, how about swinging under the sardines?
It was great.
I wasn't there as long, but I was there.
It was wonderful. There must have been four hundred. It was amazing.
There was everybody jumping up there dancing.
Be careful, I saw the pictures. He didn't look that old. Did I walk into that? As I mentioned, we are, we are out and about, meeting with legislators, we're telling our story, the same story we're telling you tonight, the same thing about our need to make investments. We're telling the same story in Raleigh and Washington. Mr. Moon will attest that we were in Raleigh. He was there, meeting with representatives as well. So I think this community's going to be very surprised that the things are going to be able to get done through our sales, the private sector, state affairs. And it's going to be a ten-year horizon, probably not a six-month horizon, but we're going to, we're going to make some great things happen. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn. Motion by everybody, second by everybody. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is adjourned.